Thank you, President Denunzio and trustees. And again, welcome to students, staff, families, and community members joining us this evening. Let me begin by acknowledging our Davis Joint Unified Educators and staff, who continue to put forth their very best effort to create engaging and safe classrooms for our students in distance learning and in readying classrooms for return to campus. I also want to recognize and thank the DJUSD parents, other family members and friends, who have had to part, put other parts of their lives on hold to support their children's learning during the last year. And thank you to the Staff Action Team and all Advisory Group members for their meticulous attention to develop and vet all of our different distance and in-person models over the last year. This week, your work has been invaluable for our collective understanding of the challenges in developing and implementing any model. Tonight, staff will provide an important update regarding DJUSD's reopening plans. Three key considerations for this work have driven a shift in our process and our work for opening on April 12th. First, on March 19th, just before spring break, the Centers for Disease Control updated K-12 school guidance to include a recommendation of students distancing of at least three feet in classroom settings. Second, under Senate Bill 98, all schools are to open to the greatest extent possible, given the various health, safety, and practical circumstances each district must consider. Third, making only one transition to a new model with the updated physical distancing recommendation during the remaining weeks left in the 2020-2021 school year. Instead of starting in our current approved hybrid model for a few weeks and then transitioning to a new model, this will provide greater stability, continuity, and predictability to the learning experience for all of our students, whether they are participating through in-person or distance learning. In addition to all DJUSD staff access to COVID vaccinations, Yolo County's tiered status of case and test positivity rates continues to decline. Yolo County entered the orange tier on March 24th, with the possibility of entering the yellow tier later this month. As a result of these critical developments, students and staff can safely return to school in person with more frequency and in greater numbers. Let's begin with an update about the state of COVID-19 in Yolo County and related information from Associate Superintendent of Student Support Services Laura Juanitas.
Thank you, Dr. Bose, and good evening trustees and student trustees. So this week, on March 30th, Yolo County began our second week in the orange or moderate tier. Our adjusted case rate increased from last week to 2.7 per cases per 100,000. The test positivity rate remained at 0.5% for the second week in a row. Another piece of good news is that the healthy equity quartile has continued to decline and is currently 1.9%. The equity metric is a measure of the test positivity rates in the county's most disadvantaged neighborhoods as determined by county census tracts. This, the state wants to ensure, next slide, please? Thank you. The state wants to ensure that this number does not significantly lag behind the overall county test positivity rate. Our overall test positivity rate, again, is 0.5%, and the rate in the most disadvantaged areas in the county is 1.9%, which still places both of those metrics in the yellow tier. Currently, in order to move into the yellow tier, we need the adjusted case rate to be below 1.0 per 100,000 and the test positivity rate to remain below 4%. Although the earliest this can occur is April 14th, we do need to meet both the yellow tier metrics for at least two weeks before we can move tiers. Next slide, please?
Thank you, Associate Superintendent Juanitas. As conditions have changed over the last year, so is our response to meet those challenges. And let's take a moment to review our phased return to campus history over the last 12 months. DJUSD, along with other districts across California, closed on March 13th, 2020. While we briefly entered the red tier in October 2020, local, state, and nationwide COVID surges through the fall and winter kept us in the purple tier. Key to the district's approach has been a focus on the health and safety of students, teachers, and staff. DJUSD has also consistently used the guiding principles of equity, access, innovation, continuity, compatibility, and efficacy to guide our decision-making. Our focus on health and safety and our guiding principles informed our decision to remain in Phase 1 full-distance learning last spring and through this school year. To meet the needs of those students struggling with attendance, social-emotional considerations are not finding success in Phase 1 full-distance learning. Our Phase 2 partial return to campus for some students had limited physical contact and was launched in October and has been serving over 300 students and 30 cohorts spread across our campuses. Improving conditions and a welcome re-entry to the red tier led to the development of our Phase 3 hybrid model. Since then, continued improving conditions, changing guidance from six to three feet of student distancing, meeting the intent of Senate Bill 98 to provide in-person instruction to the greatest extent possible, and seeking only to make one transition in the last eight short weeks of school show us we are ready to move past Phase 3 and transition straight to our Phase 4 modified in-person instructional model, as the physical distancing requirement of six feet was the driving force for the design of the current approved Phase 3 hybrid model. Next slide, please. District staff have been hard at work all year, including the spring break. The district and Davis Teachers Association negotiation teams met this past Friday and are scheduled to meet again tomorrow. The district and California School Employees Negotiation Teams met today. Thank you to our bargaining partners for their work during the last 12 months and on this Phase 4 modified in-person instructional initiative. Following the action steps outlined in the presentation of the five-day model at our board meeting last Sunday, March 28th, and to prepare for tonight's presentation, we convened our Staff Action Team on Tuesday and the Superintendent's All Advisory Group on Wednesday, and they provided important feedback on not just a five-day, but also a four-day modified in-person instructional model. This timeline describes the different activities underway in preparation for a return of students to campus on April 12th. As described just a moment ago, the earlier planning was for a Phase 3 hybrid model, and the models to be shared this evening reflect four- and five-day options for Phase 4 modified in-person instruction. Let's hear more about that now from Associate Superintendent of Instructional Services, Dr. Roddy Boonchoy, and the Instructional Services Team. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Dr. Bose. Good evening, trustees. Over the past week, staff have worked very hard to develop, revise, and seek input on the modified in-person models to be presented tonight. Process is important for decisions like this, and we've honored process, albeit at a rapid pace. We will begin with a comprehensive overview of each model under consideration. Based on stakeholder feedback, we are bringing four- and five-day modified in-person models for secondary, elementary, TK kindergarten, and preschool. Staff will outline the in-person and distance learning experience for both the secondary and elementary models, including the experience of students receiving English learner and special education supports. We will share data on model enrollment and speak to support and implications for equity and access. And the presentation will conclude with an evaluation of the four- and five-day models completed by stakeholder groups. Let me turn over, uh, turn it over to Director Troy Allen to describe the secondary models.
Good evening. Shown here is the bell schedule and the model designed for quarter four with five days of in-person learning. This model is characterized by having all in-person learners on campus for each class daily and includes designated time for intervention and small group virtual support after the last class period. Each class period is 55 minutes. Distance learners or students who stay home for any reason access instruction following the same schedule via simulcast. Sites will designate one of the breaks as a snack period for different student groups. For example, 7th grade may have the first break, 8th grade might have the second, and so on, so that students can snack outside and socially distance in the morning hours. Students will leave campus after their last class period, whether that be 5th or 7th, and pick up a bag lunch to eat at home. Students may stay on campus if invited for the intervention block, and this period is protected period for interventions like English learner services, special education services, or other targeted interventions. The virtual small group instruction block is designed for our distance learners, though in-person students may join for support if needed. This is done virtually so that teaching staff can give the undivided attention to the students virtually in lieu of simulcasting. The smaller groups have proven to be valued by our students and an effective measure for increasing access to content. This model does not include an advisory, though staff will continue the SEL signature practices and launch our return on April 12th with SEL plans as a priority. Next slide, please. And this model is nearly identical, but is our quarter four with four days of in-person learning. This model is characterized by having all in-person learners on campus for each class Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, Friday. Distance learners or students who stay home for any reason access instruction following the same schedule via simulcast. All days excepting Wednesdays have 55-minute periods. On Wednesdays, all students access school virtually as distance learners, and class periods are 50 minutes in length. This model would also maintain the advisory period. Director Duffy will share models for our preschool and elementary students at this point.
Thank you, Troy, and good evening. The five-day modified in-person California State Preschool Program, or CSPP, schedule is similar to the previous hybrid model and combines the A and B morning and afternoon groups. The Phase 4 schedule allows students to attend school five days a week for two and a half hours a day. This is a reduction from the three-hour pre-shutdown schedule to allow for room cleaning in the middle of the day. Because of the small sizes and number of students returning to campus, students opting for distance learning will be served by one dedicated teacher who will focus solely on distance learning. Next slide. Great. The four-day CSP, four-day CSP model is similar on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday and mirrors the elementary four-day models with a day dedicated to distance learning on Wednesday. This is a time where student, where in-person and distance learning students will all be in the same virtual space with their teachers. Next slide. The fee-based program provides childcare for many of our teachers and staff. This model maintains the previous daily schedule of childcare from 7:30 to 5:30 and increases attendance from four to five days a week. The schedule builds in time for classroom instruction and circle time, lunch outdoors, and a rest time in the afternoon. Next slide. The five-day modified in-person model for TK and kindergarten is shown here. This model allows students opting to learn in-person to attend school in the traditional AM/PM schedule four days a week for two hours and 30 minutes. On Wednesdays, students in both AM and PM classes will attend in the mornings. Students will not be learning in the same room, and other classrooms and outdoor spaces will be used to accommodate classes that share a room in the morning and the afternoon. During each AM and PM kindergarten session, all students will participate in an all-class meeting. The purpose of this meeting is to maintain the classroom community that teachers have worked hard to establish over this year during distance learning. Topics of this meeting will include a focus on social-emotional well-being, morning calendar time, reading a story to the class, and framing work for the day. Students opting to remain in distance learning will also receive dedicated instruction in the off or AM or PM time from their teacher for 90 minutes. For example, AM kindergarten students opting for distance learning will be in-class virtually with their teachers during the PM kindergarten class session. AM and PM kindergarten teachers traditionally support each other for 45 to 60 minutes during the day, and this model allows for that support to continue. The shortened daily class schedule from 3 hours and 20 minutes to two and a half hours a day allows for teacher preparation time to be scheduled in the middle and the end of the day. Paraeducator support will be provided for TK kindergarten classrooms that don't have a partner AM or PM teacher. Midday classroom cleaning is also scheduled, um, into this model, to occur between the AM and PM sessions. Next slide. In the four-day model for TK and kindergarten, students are still attending in the morning and afternoon on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. On Wednesday, in-person and distance learners will be in-class together virtually as classes have done since August. The afternoon on Wednesday is dedicated to teacher planning, collaboration, and staff or team meetings. I'd like to point out real quick on this, there is a one typo in the lower green in the 1220 to 250 block, which says "class meeting flexible time," and that should say "all-in PM," pin, all-in PM kindergarten teachers. So, sorry about that. Next slide, please. The five-day in-person schedule for grades 1 through 6 has students opting for in-person instruction, attending the school five mornings a week for two and a half to three hours a day, totaling 14 and a half hours a week. Like TK and Kinder, each class will hold a daily all-class meeting, including both in-person and distance learners at a flexible time determined by the teacher. Students who choose to remain in distance learning will receive dedicated instruction in the afternoons, where teachers can focus primarily on distance learning needs. On Wednesday morning, in-person instruction is shortened by 30 minutes, and distance learners have a designated 70-minute block of instruction after lunch. A teacher preparation time is built into each afternoon for 65 to 75 minutes each day and an additional 90 minutes on Wednesday for collaboration and staff team meetings. Next slide. All right, and the four-day modified model maintains three hours of in-person instruction Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, and the daily class meeting. Wednesday is a dedicated distance learning day, where all students will learn together following the same schedule and structure teachers established last fall. Distance learners are, again, served in the dedicated afternoon time four days a week, participation in the daily class meeting, and the whole class distance learning day on Wednesday morning. Students will engage in asynchronous activities and lessons Wednesday afternoons. So we'll now transition to take a look at the student experience, and I'll hand back to Director Allen.
Thank you. We see here an example of a day in the life and of an in-person learner in one of our junior high or high schools. They arrive at school and enter campus through a designated entrance and pick up their snack on their way to first period. After first period, they may hang out for a minute after class as teachers release students in groups and then make their way to third period. After their third-period class, that might be their designated snack period, they stay outside and distanced to eat before moving to fifth period. After fifth period, they move to seventh, and at the end of seventh period, our student swings by to pick up their bagged lunch and may bike home. After eating at home and a small break, they use the intervention block time to view an assigned video, and then they move to a math assignment potentially, knowing that they can go to small group instruction if they struggle with it that day. Then they go to the first 15 minutes of a small group to get their questions answered, and our student then takes a short break, has a snack, and starts additional projects or homework.
Let's think about this day from the assumption that our student is an English learner. During third period, an EL para is a second adult in the classroom providing additional scaffolds during instruction. Depending on language proficiency, if the student is at the developing stages of their English, they may have an additional designated period for designated English language development instruction. Furthermore, our student and their EL coordinator, depending on student need, may decide to meet in-person for strategic English learner interventions, so the student eats on campus and then heads home for independent work and homework.
Now, from the perspective of special education student, or student in special education. Students who receive special education services are general education students first, so they will experience periods 1 through 7 as Director Allen described. In addition, some students will have group or individual paraeducator support in their general education classes. During the intervention block and small group instruction periods, their case manager may invite them to a Zoom meeting or to stay on campus to receive support in-person after lunch. This extra support will be for general education classes and/or to support students with their IEP goals for some or all of the intervention block or small group instruction periods. Support providers like paraeducators and speech therapists will also provide services during the intervention block and in the small group instruction periods. Next slide, please.
We see here an example of a day in the life of a distance learner in one of our junior high or high schools. They log into Zoom through Canvas at 8:30 AM, and during classes, they watch the videos, see teacher presentations, and participate in breakout rooms with other distance learners or possibly in groups of both in-person and distance learner peers to collaborate. At the end of their class, their teacher may check in with the distance learning students while in-person students begin independent work or homework. During break, they may walk away from the screen or grab a snack. After lunch, during the intervention block, they resume their day with independent work, perhaps watching the same video or math that we discussed with the in-person learners. And at 2:15, they log into a virtual small group with the other distance learners in their class and clarify assignments, concepts from the week as needed.
Let's think about this day again from the assumption that our student is an English learner. During third period, an EL para professional is working with the student during a portion of classes, supports some explicit vocabulary and a writing prompt. This same student and the EL coordinator may decide to meet virtually during the intervention block that day. The student logs on through Canvas with two other English learners and the EL coordinator and receives direct instruction and support on independent work.
Again, from the perspective of a student who receives special education services. Again, they're general education students first, and they'll experience periods 1 through 7 as Director Allen described. In addition, some students will have small group or individual paraeducator support in their general education classes through the use of breakout rooms or chat. During the intervention block and small group instruction periods, case managers may invite students to a Zoom meeting where they can receive extra support. The support will be for the students' general education classes and/or to support work on the students' IEP goals for some or all of the intervention block or small group instruction periods. Support providers like paraeducators and speech therapists will also provide virtual services during the intervention block and small group instruction periods to the students who need them. Next slide, please.
Thanks, Patrick. We'll now take a look at a day in the life of an elementary in-person and distance learning students. Both will take part in an all-class meeting for 30 minutes. In-person students will then transition into class, which will include direct instruction, small group work time, class discussions, and breaks for physical activity and recess. Distance learners will work on 80 to 90 minutes of asynchronous lessons and activities in the morning. This will include lessons and practice activities from the digital versions of our ELA and math curriculum, time working in differentiated I-ready reading or math digital curriculum, lessons, videos, assignments in the Social Studies Weekly Curriculum, and physical activity. At 11:30, both groups will transition to lunch. In-person learners will be dismissed and grab a lunch from Student Nutrition Services if they wish. Lunches will also be available for distance learning families to pick up on campus. After lunch, in-person students will work on the asynchronous activities described above. While distance learners will spend time with their teacher for dedicated instruction. We anticipate the virtual afternoon classrooms to consist of three to seven students on average and will feel much more like a small group interactive meeting than a full class instruction. This will allow teachers to give extensive directed instruction and individual feedback on growth and progress. During these afternoon classroom meetings, teachers will have the flexibility to invite in-person learners to join small groups if there is a small number of distance learning students or students have similar educational objectives, and working together would be beneficial.
For English learners, we prioritize direct instruction with their classroom teacher and participation in core, in all core subject areas where their student is participating in in-person or through distance learning. Access to their core subjects and direct instruction from their classroom teacher is an important aspect of their language, English language development, not to mention interaction with peers, whether virtually or in-person. To achieve this, we are scheduling English language development small group instruction to take place during asynchronous lessons and activities, activities time. These small groups, ELD supports, will happen for students attending in-person during the window from 12:15 to 2:15 PM, while those students in distance learning during 9 to 11:30 AM. English learner specialists will coordinate small groups through a Zoom meeting and provide specialized designated English language development.
Elementary students who receive special education services are general education students first, so they will experience the all-class meeting and in-person instruction or virtual live small group instruction as Director Duffy described. In addition, some students will have group or individual paraeducator support in their general education classes during their in-person instruction and through breakout rooms and chat for students in the distance learning format. During the asynchronous periods, case managers may invite students to a Zoom meeting to help them virtually, to have them stay on campus so they can receive support in-person. This extra support will be for the students' general education classes and/or support on the students' IEP goals. Support providers like paraeducators and speech therapists will also provide support and services during the in-person, distance learning, and asynchronous periods. Next slide, please.
Before we go on, let me break in with an announcement. There has been a technology failure at Davis Media Access, which is preventing the broadcast of the meeting on Channel 17, our regular channel. But there is a fix. If you are able to alert friends, neighbors, staff, to please choose, tune into Channel 16. Channel 16, the meeting is being broadcast. We have posted the website and social media pushes will be going out as well. So Channel 16 to view tonight's meeting live. Thank you.
All right. Shall I resume? Okay. So on this slide, as we look at elementary family choices for their students to opt into in-person instruction, we see that 65% or 96% of the 149 elementary classes will have between zero and five students in distance learning. 51 classes, or 34%, have between six and 10 students, and only two classes will have 11 to 15 students in distance learning. Next slide. On these next two slides, we want to share a comparison of dedicated teacher instructional time for students learning in-person and our distance learners. Incorporating the breaks, transitions, and logistics that come into play when students are on campus and things like screen breaks that happen when learning virtually. This chart gives an overview of the five-day elementary model. On the left is the in-person student who, after the class meeting, is on campus for 120 to 150 minutes. Before and after, a 20-minute recess, it takes about five minutes to get ready, walk out to the playground, line up, and walk back into class and settle in for instructional time. Each class will spend about 10 minutes, twice a day, washing hands. Finally, as transitions happen between subjects, it takes about five minutes to allow students to get new materials, go outside for a drink of water, and mentally shift gears for the next topic. This leaves a total, a total of roughly 85 dedicated instructional minutes four days a week and 55 minutes on Wednesday. Distance learners will still participate in an all-class meeting and receive 120 minutes of dedicated instruction time on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, and 70 minutes on Wednesday. During these times, students will take at least two 10-minute screen breaks. Over a week, in-person students will see, will receive about 545 minutes of dedicated instructional time, and distance learning students roughly 600 minutes. Next slide. As we look at the four-day model, in-person students receive similar daily instruction on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday with 210 minutes of virtual instruction as a whole class on Wednesday. Distance learners will still have a two-hour block of dedicated instruction four days a week in the afternoon and also be part of the all-class distance learning on Wednesday for 210 minutes. Looking at the total weekly instructional minutes for each group, we see a 95- and 100-minute increase in dedicated instructional time for in-person and distance learning students respectively, with 640 minutes for in-person/distance learning students and 700 minutes for solely distance learners. Next slide.
As we design our schedule and plan for equity of access, we know that 30% of English learners selected distance learning and 41% of socio-economically disadvantaged students selected distance learning. So we think about equity in two ways. One, equity between distance learners and in-person learners, and also equity for students who are in our special populations. Davis is an inclusive district, and so all students access general education and their best-first instruction. We will begin by noting our universal strategies for distance learners and in-person learners before addressing where we increase services for special populations. First, we want to note that in elementary and secondary, staff will maintain the same learning outcomes for all students, teaching the same content but using diverse strategies of instruction. This is the ultimate in differentiation. Second, each model created has designated time for distance learning support. In this way, staff can design support and engage with students in much smaller numbers. In addition to building in, in equitable access for distance learners and in-person students, we think of our students who are categorized as unduplicated or in special education. We see targeted services at all sites, especially systematized at our Title I designated schools, who are directly supporting students with interventions and strategies through small group interventions in reading or math that allow in reading or math that allow those who are most in need to receive more personalized support and feedback. The goal for any targeted intervention is for students to access and ultimately master grade level standards. This is true for students in elementary and secondary. English learners must receive designated and integrated English language development supports in order to develop English language proficiency and have the necessary English language skills to fully access core curriculum. English learner specialists provide designated ELD services through small group instruction, while integrated English language development is provided by the general education teacher. We also know our counselors and student leadership are intentionally making plans that include distance learners and in-person students for engagement and community connection.
Next slide.
Thank you. We have provided ongoing support for our foster youth and students experiencing homelessness since our closure back in March of two thousand and twenty. This has been possible because of the district, we have a dedicated full-time liaison to work with these students to provide supports and to help remove barriers to their success. As we transition back to in-person, the liaison will contact all foster and homeless families before April twelfth to access school readiness and provide support where needed. This can include providing transportation, additional tutoring, school supplies, et cetera. We also have our student information system set up where the liaison is alerted when these students have repeated absences from distance learning. The same notification will happen when students are not showing up when expected to in-person classes. Our liaison also sends emails at least every two weeks to all school counselors and administrators, providing them the updated list of students who are categorized as foster or experiencing homelessness. This provides a case management model so that multiple staff are working to ensure the student's success. And arguably, the most important intervention is that our liaison checks in with students regularly to gauge how things are going and to provide support, resources, and mentoring. This practice has been occurring since the closure with the liaison doing home or porch visits in order to help the students feel connected to their school, their classes, and their teachers. With students coming on campus, she will be able to do this more frequently and with fewer barriers. Next slide, please.
And this is the final section of our presentation. So similar to the evaluation protocol we ran with Phase Three Hybrid Model back in January, we asked staff, action team, and all advisories members to assess the modified in-person models. Each participant completed two assessments, one for the four-day model of their school level, so elementary or secondary, and one for the five-day model of the same level. These data provide a snapshot of the model's strengths and weaknesses as well as a comparison between the four and five day. Recall that the assessment tool has twenty-three items organized by the five categories you see here. Health and safety, efficacy of instruction, social emotional learning, equity and access, and structural continuity and compatibility. Let's take a look at the secondary model first. Next slide. The indicators of each category are averaged in this graph for a high-level assessment. The orange bar represents the five-day model, the blue bar represents the four-day model. Forms from the action team and advisories were combined for a total of sixty-two responses for this assessment here for secondary. You can see how each of the categories scored. There are several takeaways from the survey feedback. Efficacy of instruction is rated high overall for both models because of increased in-person contact and access via simulcast instruction. The divergence in SEL for the four-day model is a result of all students being in the same learning modality on Wednesday, effectively creating opportunities for community and relationship building. There was a similar rationale for equity and access. And structural compatibility and continuity included commentary on the value of organizing instruction on one day that focuses on quality distance learning while all students are in distance learning together. Next slide. Here's an assessment of the elementary models. Forms from the action team and advisories were combined for a total of ninety-five responses. Overall, ratings compared to secondary were lower, and that's clearly because of the challenge of managing two distinct groups of students at different times of the day. You can see how each of the categories scored. There were a couple of general takeaways from these ratings in survey feedback. First, the commentary for efficacy of instruction, SEL, and equity and access was similar to what we heard in the secondary for the, for the four-day model. One day a week is dedicated to all students being together in community, accessing the curriculum in the same and familiar modality of instruction. And we saw from staff in particular, as it relates to equity and compatibility, again, the challenge of teaching in two different paradigms. And providing a high-quality learning experience for both groups of students requires the time and space afforded by the distance learning Wednesday. Telescoping out, and for both elementary and secondary, primary themes from parents include prioritization on health and safety under the current guidelines, maximizing in-person student time, and the challenge of families to manage schedules, pick-up and drop-off times, transportation, and childcare. Next slide. In conclusion, the reality is that all of this work is incredibly challenging for everyone involved. But what we hear from staff as we move through these developments is optimism and anticipation that we're getting closer to some normal. And when asked at the end of Tuesday's action team, what emotion do you expect to feel when you see your students? There was an explosion in chat of two-hundred-and-fifty-plus DJ USD educators expressing joy, excitement, and relief. Testament that we all cannot wait to see our students again. I'm gonna turn it back over to Dr. Boz.
Thank you, Dr. Boon Choi, and to all of our presenters tonight and to all of the staff that contributed to developing this evening's presentation. As Board President Denunzio mentioned earlier, a special thank you to longtime Director of Technology Marcia Bernard, who is taking a terrific professional opportunity for an expanded role in a much larger district, Twin Rivers, as their Chief Technology Officer. We know she will do great in Twin Rivers, just as she has done in DJ USD. Thank you, Marcy, for all of your contributions to our classrooms, schools, and district. We know that DJ USD benefits every day from an inclusive, caring, and supporting community and families where we all belong, a dedicated and professional staff that are second to none, and top-quality health and safety protections in place for our students and staff. Let's stay focused on three key takeaways. First, the new guidance on three-foot student distancing is critical in terms of planning and implications for in-person instruction. Second, offering a program that provides in-person learning to the greatest extent possible, consistent with SB ninety-eight and given the various health, safety, and practical circumstances each district must consider. And third, making one transition to a new model during the remaining eight weeks left in this school year to help provide continuity, predictability, and stability on our campuses. All this means we must adjust timely, appropriately, and thoughtfully to our improved circumstances for Phase Four. Our Phase Four on-campus and distance learning plans will help us also be better prepared for expanded summer school offerings. And the Phase Four Modified In-Person Instructional Model will also inform and support our full intention to open the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two school year with a full end day experience as well as a distance learning academy. Again, we are actively planning to implement plans for a Phase Five full return to campus to open the new school year on August twenty-fifth. For right now, we can't wait to see students returning to campus on April twelfth and to welcome students also to all the extracurricular club group and other activities that will be underway. Thank you all, and let me turn the presentation back over to President Denunzio.